And I will roll right into our next deputation. It is Anita Kranick. Anita and Jacinta.
It's just me.
McDonald.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Great.
Hi.
I'm Hillary.
So.
And Hillary's with me as well, but I'm presenting alone.
Okay, great. So you do have 10 minutes for your presentation? Great.
Okay, great. So hi, my name is Anita Kranz. I'm the Global Campaign Coordinator of Plant-Based Treaty. And I had the privilege of speaking at the Muskoka Environment Summit at the invitation of Counselor Johnson. So the Plant-Based Treaty is a global initiative, and our mission is to promote a shift towards a just, plant-based food system that would enable us to live safely within our planetary boundaries and to reforest and rewild the earth. Currently, more than 60 cities have endorsed, just three just at the COP30. We have a team there. We'd like Gravenhurst to be the next to endorse. No, I'm just trying to get this thing here. Sorry. So we have five programs. The first one is we collect endorsements from individuals, groups, businesses, and cities to create bottom-up grassroots pressure on national governments to negotiate a global treaty. We already have a quarter million people that have signed, including a Beatle, Sir Paul McCartney, who's going to be playing in Hamilton, I think this Friday, and we're going to be tabling at the Hamilton Concert. A number of Nobel Laureates have endorsed, many prominent IPCC scientists and so forth. As I mentioned, we have a cities program where we encourage cities to include food in their climate action plans. We have a menu change program where we have playbooks of best practices for early childhood education, universities, and so forth, including highlighting the work of the University of Guelph, which has a plant-based center. We advocate at the Global Climate Talks. We have UN observer status. We've been at the COP since Glasgow. And then we also have training and capacity building. And we have about 200 teams worldwide in 50 countries. So just beginning with the science, there are a number of tipping points that we're going to likely cross even at 1.5 degrees Celsius. As you know, the Paris Accord called for a maximum of 1.5 to 2 degrees Celsius warming, and they said beyond 2 degrees Celsius would be catastrophic. But already at 1.5 degrees Celsius, there are five tipping points that we could cross. And those include the collapse of the Greenland ice sheet, the collapse of the Antarctic ice sheet, the West Antarctic ice sheet, tropical coral reef die-off, northern permafrost abrupt thawing, and Labrador Sea current collapse. And then beyond that, the 1.5 to 2 degrees, there's even further tipping points that could be crossed. And Johan Rockstrom is a famous scientist who came up with the term planetary boundaries. And he says these tipping points are something that we are likely to face, and that the 1.5 degrees Celsius target is a physical limit, not a political target. So next slide, I'll show you. So how does the global food system relate to this? Even if we phased out fossil fuels today, we're likely to cross the 1.5 to 2 degrees target for global warming. And the global food system is the single largest greenhouse gas emitting sector in the world, responsible for a third of global greenhouse gas emissions. When you look at methane, the food system is responsible for 54% of methane emissions. This includes 36% from animals raised for food, 10% from rice cultivation, and 8% from food waste. The global food system is transgressing five of the nine planetary boundaries. And we could protect those boundaries if we address the food system and promote a transition towards a more plant-based food system. 18% of the global calories come from animal products, but yet these products require 83% of the farmland, so it's highly inefficient. And 71% of the global deforestation is due to animal agriculture. This next slide shows how much land is used for farming, and it's 4 billion hectares worldwide. If people switched to a plant-based food system, they would be using only 1 billion. So that's a three-quarter reduction. So we could save a lot of land and reforest and rewild the earth. That would be a carbon sink as well. In the terms of milk, please consider switching to oat milk or plant-based milk. The land use of oat milk is 10 times lower than the use of dairy milk, for example. But it's not just greenhouse gases, or land use. It's also water use, it's eutrophication of our lakes, it's acidification. So all those measures, you can see, switching to plant-based milk would reduce those impacts. This diagram shows a donut economics. That was created by Kate Raworth at Oxford University. And on the outside, she has the planetary boundaries. And I know it shows six in red, now there's a seventh. Novel entities is also in the red zone. And these are planetary boundaries that have been transgressed. And then on the inside, she put UN Sustainable Development Goals. In our case, we put the food donut economics. And she's invited us, the Plant-Based Treaty, to work on the food donut economics chapter for her, which she's working on this year and next year. She's working on a report. So the green zone is the safe zone. It's a safe and just zone where we have to be in order to protect the planetary boundaries and to also secure our UN Sustainable Development Goals. On the right, I put a shocking sort of graph which shows per capita meat consumption. Think of your parents or grandparents, how much meat, dairy, and eggs they ate, and think of it today. So 1960, the average person, sorry, 1980, the average person worldwide ate 30 kilograms of meat per year. But now it's 45 kilograms. That's a 50% increase. And if you look at post-war numbers, that's all you've seen, it's just a constant increase, except with COVID it dipped, but now it's back up. So this is not sustainable from an environmental perspective. My favorite graph from the Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change, a special report on land use, shows the impact of different diets. If people went plant-based, that would save eight gigatons of carbon equivalent per year. These other diets shows the savings, like for a flexitarian, it would be five gigatons. This does not include land use, or the deforestation, and the loss of carbon sinks. That would more than double the number. So now to the solutions. 59 cities worldwide, as I said, it's over 60 now. In Southern Ontario, it's Brampton, Calleden, Mississauga, Richmond Hill, Vaughan, have all endorsed the Plant-Based Treaty. We'd like Gravenhurst to be next. In 2020, Muskoka District Council declared a climate emergency, and we'd like to see Gravenhurst Climate Change Mitigation Plan to include food, and not just food waste. So we'd like to see a prioritization of a shift towards low-carbon food. We'd like to see design of public information campaigns. And I was wondering if it was okay to distribute these. We've made these plant-based Climate Hero leaflets based on the wonderful Muskoka District's Climate Hero. So we just did a plant-based version. So we only have a few, but if we were allowed, we'd love to circulate these. And we have this other Plant-Based Starter Guide as well, which we'd love to circulate. Thank you. So we'd also like to see the enhancement of food justice and food security, which would promote health by encouraging community gardens, vegetable gardens, and pollinator plants. There are studies that show if children work on community gardens, they're more likely to eat vegetables. And we'd also like to see Gravenhurst calculate consumption-based emissions, not just production, because obviously your production emissions would be low. These are some of the cities that have endorsed the treaty. We have three European capitals, Belfast, Amsterdam, and Edinburgh. And in the case of Amsterdam, they took really strong measures, like they created Vegan Fridays in all public institutions. They've included plant-based options in all the other days at their various institutions. They host an annual conference. And very interestingly, they committed to a 60-40 ratio of plant-based versus animal protein for the entire city by 2030. And corporations have also come up with a similar target in Amsterdam. In Edinburgh, they have carbon labeling in universities, plant-based snacks for library events, then they promote Veganuary. Veganuary is about eating vegan for the month of January, when people make New Year's resolutions. So that's something you could do, because Wes Hollywood also did that when they endorsed. In Xmith, they have plant-based catering. And in Lambeth, they're promoting fruit and vegetable vouchers for low income. These are some of the motions that passed. So that's the one in Brampton, where they came up with a plant-based action plan, and they're promoting, they have a Plant-Based Awareness Week, which they did in April for Earth Month. This is the Calleden motion, which says they're working with us. And we did a green smoothie lunch and learn for their mayor and councillors and staff. And we participated in Earth Hour and gave out smoothies, and also more recently for the Waste Reduction Conference. This is the Mississauga motion that just recently passed, which they promote public awareness. And when we met with the staff person, they were interested in working cross-government, so they want to work with Calleden, Brampton, and Peel to do a collective response on food. Richmond Hill just recently endorsed, and they're promoting more plant-based food and raising awareness. And this photo is from Gravenhurst Library, so Counselor Johnson put up one of our leaflets, which I circulated there. If you open it up, on the inside, you'll see, you know, where do I get my protein, where do I get my calcium, and so forth. There's an ad there in the center, Eat a Whole Lot More Plants, Mayor Eric Adams. He had diabetes type 2, and then he Googled, how do I reverse it? And he found out that he could reverse it with a whole foods plant-based diet, and he did. And as a result, he introduced a number of initiatives, including a subway ad campaign, emphasizing, as you see, the flying vegetables, it's about eating whole foods. And then Eat Less Meat and Dairy, that's from Manchester, UK. So this is the leaflet that I distributed, Become a Plant-Based Climate Hero. So it just gives some ideas of how you can reduce your carbon footprint and also improve your health. And on the inside, these are some of the ideas, so bronze, silver, gold. And I was wondering if your city and the district would consider circulating something like this as well, in addition to your amazing Climate Hero leaflet. You can eat 10 vegan burgers for one average beef burger in terms of carbon footprint. It just gives you an idea. So some health considerations. So as we know, there's an increasing burden of chronic disease in Canada, including in children. Children didn't get autoimmune disease before, but now it's more common because of consumption of animal products and also processed food. So plant-based diets are important in the prevention, treatment, and reversal of chronic disease. It is possible to eat a healthy plant-based diet at all stages of life. You need to eat foods from the different food groups, so legumes, and nuts, and seeds for protein and fat, fruits and vegetables for fiber and micronutrients, and of course grains. Canada's Food Guide is 87% plant-based, and a glass of milk has been replaced by a glass of water. And according to the World Health Organization, you should eat at least five portions of a variety of fruits and vegetables a day, but ideally 10. And finally, approximately 65% of the population is allergic to dairy. So as I mentioned, one of our endorsers is Sir Paul McCartney and his two daughters, Mary and Stella. And they said, we believe in justice for animals, the environment, and people. That's why we support the Plant-Based Treaty and urge individuals and governments to sign it. And so this is just the final slide of some of our asks. We're asking councillors to join Counselor Peter Johnson and endorse our initiatives as individuals, but also for the city to consider introducing a motion and incorporating food in its mitigation climate action plan. We also ask that you switch to plant-based dishes, where the city has jurisdiction at events, council meetings, if you have any jurisdiction over early childhood education, retirement homes, shelters, and that you promote public awareness. For example, there are many ideas in the Plant-Based Climate Heroes leaflet. And also consider introducing carbon labeling at events with food. It's another way of raising awareness. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. I'm a vegetarian, I've been for, I won't say 100 years, but so a lot of these points hit home with me for sure. The way we do things here is, you know, we thank you for coming very much. I mean, a lot of information for us to digest, and a lot of things, no pun intended. And, you know, I think, to be fair to council and to you, I think if we, we have the information, great information, but a lot of it. So prior to endorsing any of that, we do, the reason we sort of not prolong these things is give the public an opportunity to hear what you have to say, and reach out to us and say, great idea, we're in support of this. But, you know, we certainly have to wait to hear how, you know, we speak for the public, so give them the opportunity to chime in on the idea. So I think a lot of great ideas personally that we can take from your presentation, and thank you for it. But I will ask, Counsel, are there any questions? I think, again, lots of great information or questions. Counselor Johnson?
I do have a question, but before I do that, I just want to, a minute or so, just to highlight. Anita, thanks for all that you and your team do. I've known Anita and her team for two or three years, and they travel all over the world. And anyway, two of the things I just want to mention that Anita said in her presentation that are very critical for people to understand. One, she mentioned that there are nine planetary boundaries, and we've already breached five or seven. But what the research now, though, is germane to what Anita and her crew are doing, research now says that they can roll back five of those by transitioning, not switching, by transitioning into climate-based agriculture. And then, so there's that. And then the other point that's frustrating to people like anybody that's involved in climate action, is that two of the biggest climate factors are gas and oil, gas and oil emissions. And we continue to drill, 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 drill that. And then secondly, as Anita pointed out, meat production. Agriculture is one of the other drivers of climate, and that is going up through the top of the graph. So there's that. And my question, Anita, just is that, and I was going to ask you this the other day, I assume, are you and your team going to COP30?
We have a team, about eight people there.
Yeah. And I don't know, I wrote an article recently about the impact of COP30 on Muskoka. And I just wondered, do you have any quick insight into what may be coming out of COP30 that might impact what we're doing here in Muskoka? Thank you for all that you do.
Thank you. Well, I don't know the results of the negotiations that are happening now, but I do know that increased role in these global negotiations, and they're recognized as key partners with the UN. So there's a general recognition that cities and towns and municipalities have an incredible role in fighting climate change, you know, because most of the population lives there, the local governments are more responsive to citizens, the impacts are being felt by cities. And you do have some jurisdiction. I wish you had more jurisdiction, but, you know, to address these issues. So that's one trend that we see, is that these local, there are a lot of mayors there. There are a lot of councillors that go to COP30. That's how we got some city endorsements, because there's, yeah, a lot of local representatives attend. So, yeah, I think it's a great opportunity to meet. But I don't know what the outcome of the negotiations will be, we'll see. It's usually done at the 11th hour, so.
Okay, Counselor Strength?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, through you. Great presentation, very thought-provoking presentation. My question is, do you have any data or statistics on how a plant-based diet compares to a carnivore or dairy diet financially? Like, I was under the impression that having a plant-based diet was more expensive. And in this day and age, I just wonder if you have any information on that, how it compares when people are really pinching their pennies to try and put supper on the table?
Thank you. That's a very good question. So New York City, under Mayor Eric Adams, he introduced plant-based by default twice in public, all 11 public hospitals. So that means, like, you know, if you're flying, and they say, do you want chicken or beef? And if you go, actually, no, actually, I want, you know, a plant-based meal, you have to call in. So the default is always meat, dairy and eggs, right? So he reversed that. So in the public hospitals, you're offered plant-based twice. And they don't say it's plant, but they just say, like, you know, sizzling, zucchini, lasagna, or zesty ginger or something or another. So you make it super, so most people, they don't mind that. Like, only 2%, 3%, 4% of the population is vegan, but at the hospitals in New York City, 50% choose that, and the satisfaction rate is 90%. And there are cost savings per meal, because it's very healthy. They're not serving very processed food, which is more expensive. So, you know, if you make, like, a chili or a lasagna, it's not expensive. It's only when you buy products that aren't subsidized, because unfortunately, the plant base is not subsidized. In fact, one of the most important things we should do is subsidize vegetables. Vegetables are the most important thing to eat. There's a famous doctor, sorry, Furman, Dr. Joel Furman, that says, you should put on your fridge a sign that says, the main dish is a salad. So what you do is you add beans and tofu on the salad, but you have a big salad every day. I personally have a green smoothie every day, and we actually brought some, if anyone wants samples. But it's about eating your dark leafy greens, because Dr. Furman says they're at 100 in terms of nutrients. He defines it as nutrients per calorie. They're at 100. Then when you go to 80, it might be, you know, like the fruits or whatever, then go down to 60, it might be the tofu, and then nuts and seeds. Then you go down, say, 15, it might be dairy, then zero is cookies. So you know no nutrients whatsoever for that. But, I mean, so the question is, like, how do you eat whole food, plant-based, which is cost-effective, super-healthy, so it also reduces your health costs, and improves your cost of living? And, yeah, it's just like, how do you eat more vegetables? That's the key thing. Like, yeah. You know, beans are also very cheap. Like, I have a pressure cooker, and I don't like, you know, buying cans, so I prefer, you know, my red kidney beans, my chickpeas. It's very cheap to eat lentils and chickpeas and to make a delicious stew, or to mix it with your rice. Yeah, so I think it can be. I think just people don't know, they have to remember what their grandparents did, or great-grandparents did. And this is in many cultures. Many cultures are very plant-based, if you go back.
Can I just add something? I just wanted to say also, it's how you prepare things. And like, beans, tofu, per pound, translate to a lot more economical compared to meat and dairy, certainly, with almond milk and all kinds of other plant-based options to add. Also, they will impact inflammation in terms of, you know, better, like, when you use plant-based options, inflammation in a lot of people will decline. But overall, beans, tofu are cheap as you'll get, because it's just how you prepare them. So recipes is really key. And I think we focus more on that, and delivering options that are tasteful, flavorful, and also good for your health. More and more children will gravitate towards them, as well as adults who typically may have been leaning on fast food, quick options, right? And if we make those available to go and take away, even better for having those options available to more people.
Okay, I'm going to go over to Counselor Hunter.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, through you. Great presentation, thank you very much. My question is, in the presentation, you talk a lot about the health benefits. And I wondered if you've approached the Health Unit, because it said a lot about public awareness. And so, just wondering if you've approached them, and if they're eager to get on board as well.
Yeah, that's a great idea. No, we haven't approached the Health Unit yet, but when we met with the Region Appeal, that was very much the focus, is on, the staff person was saying, we need to work with the Health Unit. So that's in the process there. With respect to the presentation, we drew on Dr. Zaraka Sam. She's an oncologist, and she teaches at the University of Toronto, and she helped develop the Canada Food Guide. And she also organizes annual conferences. She's with Plant Food Canada, or Plant-Based Canada. So she organizes these conferences, so she's helped us in developing our strategy, and she works with various other groups. I can't think of the name right now, but, yeah, she works with various groups. But, yeah, I think you're absolutely right. It's very important to focus on the health angle. And I think that's what motivated New York City, which has one of the best programs in the world. And, you know, because that ad campaign that I showed you, that was developed with their Health Unit, Eat a Whole Lot More Plants. So he was trying to emphasize whole foods. But, yeah, that is a good approach.
Okay, Counselor Barney?
Thank you, through you. I'm just wondering, why is it that the meat consumption has gone up? Is it because meat is less expensive, or was it because in our parents' and grandparents' time, it was more scarce for them? I mean, I can remember, a roast of beef had to last a whole week, whether it was a meatloaf and, you know, all the way down. Is that, I mean, I'm surprised, because I would have thought that it would have been lower because of all these other diets that people are doing, which is, and vegan and all of the others, yeah. Why do you think that's happened?
That's an excellent question. So at the University of Western Ontario, Professor Tony Weiss, he's written a book called Hoofprint, I think it's called. And he looked at just the meat consumption over time in Canada. And in Canada, as the US and a lot of other places, meat consumption skyrocketed post-World War II. And that had to do with the development of factory farms, which decreased the price point. Prices, as we know with climate, price is key. That's why the carbon tax was so important. The carbon tax did a lot of good in Germany as well. So we know that taxes really work, although they're made unpopular, you know, by, you know, by different parties and so forth. But, so the same thing with meat, dairy, and eggs. First of all, the production is factory farming, makes it easier to produce a lot at a cheap rate, plus they're subsidized. So like, price is key. But it's also advertisement, you know, and people's perception. So there are so many factors that lead to increased, it's not just demand, it's also supply. And, you know, there are companies like Cargill, it's a very big, you know, one of the world's biggest companies, like, they have a target in Asia to get 100 million people to do backyard chicken operations. And these are largely plant-based societies that are now turning to, you know, having, once you develop a network of slaughterhouses, and, you know, have the animal feed and all that, they're going to go in the same direction. So their consumption is just growing. So it doesn't look good. There was a Harvard study of all these food experts that answered the question of, when does meat, dairy, and eggs have to peak for us to meet our targets? And they said 2030. And then they said by 2036, it would have to decrease meat and dairy and egg consumption would have to go down 60%. But if you look at the Food and Agriculture Organization, the UN organization that looks at these trends, they just, the graph is just going up and up and up. In 1960, we, 6 billion land animals were killed a year. What do you think it is today? That was 1960. So it's in our lifetimes. Now it's over 100 billion. So do you see the trend? So 100, over 100, but that's just land animals, not talking about fish or marine animals. So that's, and it's just getting, the problem's just getting worse and worse and worse. And Counselor Johnson mentioned the planetary boundaries. It's a new concept. So remember in the 1970s, there was like, you know, Limits to Growth, Donella Meadows. In 1960s, it was Rachel Carson, Silent Spring. There were books by Paul Ehrlich and his wife, I forgot her name, but, you know, about the population bomb. There was all this worry about what's going to happen this century, and they were basically right, although they were mocked at the time. Back then, they didn't know the concept of planetary boundaries. That was only introduced in 2009 by Johan Rockstrom. And there's a Netflix film on him called Breaking Boundaries, narrated by Sir David Attenborough. And he talks about, like, back then, it was just three boundaries that were transgressed in 2009, but they didn't have enough data for some of the others. Then they did another study, 2017, and increased to five. Then they did another study, 2023, then they said it was seven. And then just this year, they said, oh, it's eight. So the only planetary boundary that's healthy is the ozone layer. All the others are being transgressed. So microplastics, novel entities, freshwater use, nitrogen and phosphorus, land use, biodiversity is critical, climate change, critical. So, yeah, this is the direction, we're in the sixth mass extinction. And it's only getting worse and worse. And so, but the thing is, it doesn't have to be hard to change. We can make it fun, we can make it delicious, we can make it healthy. You know, it just, you know, food is something that, you know, that's so important to so many people and so many cultures, but there are ways to do this. So we have to figure it out, how to make, you know, it's a win-win-win ultimately, if we, as Counselor Johnson said, it's like, I think you used the word transition, or, yeah, transition.
Okay. Can I just, sorry, I'm just going to add to that from my non-academic experience, but just understanding how Big Pharma, and I mean that, you know, how pharmacy sales have gone exponentially as well. Big Pharma with an F is also, that's the main driver, is profits. So we have to be mindful of that, that they have an agenda, is to make more and more money at the expense of health. At the end of the day, there's no real concern if we see the hospitals still ailing with a lot of people that are sick, and with all kinds of diseases, from diabetes to cancer to autoimmune disease. So, our Canada Food Guide is supporting this, which is great. It's just we have to be more mindful and try and get the message out as best we can, and obviously in baby steps, but the transition is the key, I suppose, to have people more engaged in trying different menu options, and having their families try different food choices, so, yeah, that's it. Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you. I know councillor Johnston wanted another opportunity, but I think there'll be another opportunity to discuss this very interesting concept. Again, we appreciate you coming, lots of information, and, yeah, I'm sure it's not the last we've heard about the Plant-Based Treaty around this table, so thanks for coming.
Great. We have a couple of folders, do we, just with a sample motion and some background, do we leave it with you?
Yep, our clerk will receive that.
Thank you so much.
Perfect. Yeah, thanks for coming.